To the regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. We know Sharon Russell is dealing with an ill family member, so she won't be in, but we have Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, and Matt Geddy, so we have a quorum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that was a mistake. Thank you. All right, um, we have Select Board minutes for the October 7th meeting.
Love to approve.
Motion's been made to approve.
Second.
And seconded, any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Stand.
At one abstention, so it's 3-0-1, and we'll circulate. Okay. Next is the approval of the orders.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve them.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? If not all in favor of approving the orders, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries 4-0-0. Um, okay, are there any board member announcements? Nope, thank you. Um, update from the Select Board Chair, a couple of quick things. The Circle article is due for the next addition of the Circle on November 15th. So you have a little time to, you know, hone your creative writing skills there, department heads, and I'm looking at three, four of you. November 15th, okay? Oh.
Oh, they're all there.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
On video.
Um, the, so I've reminded you all, remind you again. The Joint Intermunicipal Committee to meet with our city counterparts to discuss the 250th anniversary, and you can pick which, whether it's State of Vermont Independence, or whether it's Independence Day for the US.
Anybody else is doing 250 years for the country, but.
Yeah, we do it differently.
Yeah. Yeah, because we didn't become an independent country for a few more years after.
Well, yeah, it was like, we were independent for longer than Texas was.
It was after.
Well, anyway, that Joint Intermunicipal Committee, which we were going to be meeting, um, I think later this month, has been postponed because one of the people on the city committee resigned, and they're looking for a replacement. So once that replacement is in, um, they'll be back in touch and we'll set. So I know you're, all of you waiting anxiously for the outcome of that meeting. Um, it won't happen right away. Um, I'll deal, I'll, I think Barbara, if she's on, might talk about this a little bit, but Barbara and I met with, um, Green Mountain Power concerning the Pocket Park, and we have a little report on that. Um, some good news and then some explanation about why there were suddenly some signs put up there. So, and that's something I wanted to run by the Select Board as well. Okay, that's what I have. Um, are there any questions from the floor, public comments? Or anyone wish to say anything to us on items that are not otherwise something we'll be covering on our agenda? Yes, no?
We are gonna cover Heather Lane, correct?
We are gonna cover Heather Lane. I thought you might be here for that. Okay. All right, um, yeah, since you're here, and is there any, and I don't see anyone on the Zoom call. Okay, um, why don't we take up Heather Lane? You have in your packet a nice map, and a copy of the letter that Bill sent to residents of Heather Lane concerning the E911, proposed name change and a suggested name change. So, um, could you identify yourself and come on up?
Come up?
Well, if you want. I mean.
How about I just stand over here? That way.
We're not that bad.
My name is Marvin Elliott.
Okay.
I live on 62 Heather Lane.
Yep.
Yep. Um.
It's okay to sit down. We're not that bad.
There's, okay, um. I'm really not an elected representative. I'm just a person who, I guess, gives a damn. I don't wanna put it that way. That makes it sound like they're not, and I think that everybody's just taking this kind of casually. Uh, I was one of the people who had my address changed to Mendon. I think that was by a, um, post office glitch, and it took, so that when it came to city, it put Mendon. So, uh, as long as we told Nick that that happened, he ignored the Mendon, because he, he's our mail guy and been there forever, and you know, he knows where we live and all that. But the UPS people, and it was driving people crazy, because, you know, like, hey, what do you mean Mendon? Did you move? And you know, things like that. So, yes, I was affected in that respect. By the way, that took a year.
To get it straightened out.
And every once in a while, I find out whose mailing address list isn't up to date, because it'll come through with Mendon. But anyway, that's, I'm getting off the topic, kind of. Um, we, we two were concerned, and we know that Mendon has a Heather Lane too.
Yeah.
Um, nobody went so far as to step up and do anything about it. At, at this point, uh, without, as I said, and I wasn't elected to this job, but I did go out and talk to at least some of the neighbors, and, uh, having my own preferences for different names that, that I was kind of partial to, but nobody else liked. Uh, and then one of them came up with extension, because Crossman Drive is right there. Uh, it wouldn't seem, for the, those who don't know, you can see it comes in from Route 4, uh, is Crossman Drive, and then it comes Heather Lane. So it would be a pretty simple thing to just call it Crossman Drive Extension. The only negative I have about it is that makes a pretty long name for our address.
Oh.
You know, Crossman Drive Extension, but we'll probably use EXT or something like that.
DR period EXT, yeah, okay.
That's, that, that's about it, and, uh, the people I talked to had no problem with that.
Good.
The, oh, I, but I did run into a guy who lives at 97, and his address is getting changed to 99, and he said, "Why do I have to change my box number?" Because somebody's GPS is two feet different than the other guy's, you know?
I think you'll find that that's, I don't think we need to change those very small ones.
Okay.
The, the letter didn't actually specify, but though, am I correct that the only one that would have to be changed is 154?
So, the, the numbers on the map are based upon correct measurements from the intersection of what is now Crossman Drive, starting at that, starting there. So these are correct numbers based upon accurate measurements. So that's why some of them are, some of them are accurate. Um, 62, 71, 83 are correct. The rest of them start to fall off from there, so it progressively kind of gets worse as you go, kind of go down there. But, um, if, if the name is gonna have to change, it's, so 99 to 97, it's, it's actually a 10-foot difference. It's not, it's not two feet, it's actually a 10-foot difference. But that one is, that one is the least difference of any of them. So, we, we, we could make a decision that we could leave 97 alone, but that, that'd be the only one we wouldn't change, but it.
But there was one that had to change on the other side, because it threw the numbering off. Is that right? Okay.
One, the, the three right in the middle, those are, there, there's 154 to, it should be 134, 161 should be 141. Those are off by quite a bit.
Yeah.
Those are, those are wrong. If you change those, 131 doesn't make sense anymore, because it's too close. So it's just, it's lining things up, but they have to change the name anyway, because it is an actual name change. So changing the name and the number would be logical to do all in one shot.
And I think that'll satisfy, he couldn't figure out why, why that would change, but now we got an answer to that. I think he'll be satisfied.
Since you're changing the name, you may as well line up the numbers the way they should be.
Not everybody knows that the, when you're doing the 911 system, they take a mile and divide it by 1,000. So every, it's, so a mile is 5,280 feet. So, the number changes are in five foot, is it the five feet?
Five point two.
Two, two eight feet. So, so it's a consistent actual number, and that's how they come up with it, but.
Well, this guy's an engineer, you know what? He'll understand that.
You know, and, and, you know, if you're building, if you're putting footings down, and you know, they're two feet short, he'll understand that that's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Because the wall's gonna be longer, so.
Well, thank you for visiting with your neighbors and for getting consensus on that. I mean, it was, it was, we know it's a nuisance. Um, we've done it in other neighborhoods and.
But we, we, I think we had to face up to it sooner or later.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
This, this. And I think for you guys, it became a little more personal, because you were having trouble getting stuff delivered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's agonizing, you know? Um, what did we, the time schedule is not till we're gonna, after the holidays, is that what?
That's up, that's, we have discretion on that. So yeah, it would be appropriate to have it done in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
So you'll get through one more holiday season with your current address, which will help, should help.
Do we, will we get an official letter or something like that?
Well, let's, we haven't voted on it.
Oh.
So we should probably do that.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, and then, then we'll know and we'll assign, you know, the numbers according to this, and Crossman Drive Extension, if that's what we agree to do. Speaking of which, is there a motion?
Some.
Okay. I will interpret that as, um, the motion is made to change Heather Lane in Rutland Town to Crossman Drive Extension, and to align the numbers for the addresses according to the map that Bill has produced. That was the motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it might be.
I couldn't have said that better.
That's why I heard. In fact, you didn't.
Is there any discussion? Oh, effective date, January 1st. That's in the motion. I heard that.
What's the first Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that gets you through the holidays, and, and so that should be, you, you're gonna have probably trouble with packages being delivered, but it's gonna take a while for this to all sink in anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
And letters to go out.
Yep.
Okay, so all of that, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0, and thanks again. We appreciate the neighborhood helping us out on this one.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, um. Next, Mike Rowe. I think we're ready to go into, does any, anybody else need to take anything out of order? Don't you hate that? When you're ready to go and.
I don't care.
Okay, come on up.
I'm happy to. I learned it from you.
I know. Um, so, uh, first, we, as far as the budgeting, um, we need to schedule a Rec Committee meeting, and so Sharon asked me just to put a date out, if before the next meeting works, it shouldn't take us very long. Already preliminary done it. It's done, for the most part, just for us to go over and make it, make it right. Um, so I'll send an email out to Bill, and then we'll go forward if that will work for you.
Okay, just as a reminder, we took a look at what we had talked about, and we hope to have a budget meeting on December 9th. That's a Tuesday in between our regular meetings. And we'll do the general, and we'll look at the other, um, all of the departments as best we can, I think, and then finalize it hopefully before the end of the year. That's, I mean, it's a little bit fluid, but we've got that meeting date set aside.
Perfect. Um, today, all the water is officially shut off at all the parks. So we're good there. I got one last little mow, and then some bunch of baseball field work to do. We had an issue with one of our tractors, the tractor that Dave and I share. Uh, is not functioning, and it's been at the shop for two weeks and haven't heard anything. So we're waiting to hear back. That's also the sidewalk plow tractor. So.
They had diagnosed.
They, they, but no, it's been a, um, yeah, no. I don't have any information for you.
Okay, so you're telling me there's a chance we get to keep this tractor?
Yeah. Oh, we'll, we'll keep the tractor. It depends on what's gonna be inside of it when we, when we figure it all out. But we have not heard back yet, so hopefully sooner rather than later, and we'll keep you posted. Um, we had our senior luncheon today at Baxter's Restaurant. We had, I don't know, like 36 people show up, and probably four or five newbies, which was great. We're trying to grow the crowd. Um, they had a wonderful time. Baxter's did a fantastic job for the group, um, and they were a very spirited group today. So that was excellent. We are planning, uh, the 18th, uh, Chief, I will contact you. That will be our annual Thanksgiving dinner. That will be at Center Fire Station, and it will be catered by Kamuta's Market.
Good.
It'll be the turkey stuffing.
Nice.
Our usual one that we do.
Yeah.
Um, there over at Center Fire, that we've done for years and years and years. And then they set the, the other senior luncheon on the 17th of December, which will be at the school with the jazz band, um, like they've done the past couple of years as well. So we're getting.
Good.
Close, 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 close to the holidays, as we all know. Uh, soccer wrapped up this past weekend. It was a great experience. We hosted at our place. We didn't do it this Saturday. They did the Jamboree at Otter Valley. But, you know, as we were saying earlier, we were turning over about 80 cars an hour at Northwood, and it all went very smoothly. Got a lot of positive comments and compliments on how things went. So very happy that that went, and we'll continue with that. Uh, basketball signups are ongoing. So please, because that's starting, we have our directors meeting next week to get that all started to go. And I did my first background check today. We are all good to go. It went very smoothly. So we have a system in place where we keep the stuff. And we'll, should be a fairly smooth process moving forward.
Does that include the fingerprinting too?
Well, that goes through.
Yeah.
That's the second phase, that they have to then go up there and get fingerprinted, and then I get that information back.
Okay.
And once I get that, it goes into a file cabinet folder, and it's all labeled, and thanks to Bill's help, we got a new little file cabinet, and we have it in a secure location.
Good.
Um, other than that, unless anybody has any questions or anything. Oh, Halloween party is Friday. The weather's not looking the greatest, so we would shift to indoors. Um, for the two of you, even though if you want to plant yourself outside, um. Okay, well, I just, I'm gonna make the decision probably around 12 o'clock, depending on what Friday's bringing, whether we're gonna go outside or not. I'm not gonna do it in the rain. And the gym is where we used to do it many, many years ago, is the backup.
Okay.
So we might be inside, but even if you guys are right out front or on the side of the building, then that would be great, like you normally do. But I did want to tell you that we might have to make a slight adjustment, depending on the weather. But we are still planning to go ahead on, uh, Friday, this Friday. Perfect. All right, awesome.
Questions for Mike? How's the South End Sewer Project? Oh, no, why am I asking you?
Next guy.
We expanded your authority. We just didn't tell you.
South End Sewer, well, okay, so you want the, the dirty part? Do you want the clean part? You want the mixed fluids and waste? Which part do you want?
No.
Rumor has it, there's still a hole, and there's piping involved.
Okay. All right, so I think we'll leave it with Dave.
Yeah. Is there any other bad news you want me to drop? Because I could be your fall guy right now.
You may wanna hang around a little bit for the Pocket Park.
Is she?
Yeah.
Kind of quick, is she even, is Barbara on or not yet?
Not yet, but.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah.
Not a problem.
All right, just ignore all of that. Thank you, Mike. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner. I was just anticipating that you were already up here, and you know.
It is riveting stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so the last couple of weeks have kind of been getting ready for winter. So we, uh, we filled our building with salt. We sprayed it ourselves. Um, so you might notice there's a bill in there for around $50,000.
I saw that.
That gets us started. Hopefully it gets us finished, but eh, we'll see. Uh, we took some time, uh, the last couple of weeks rebuilding the sandbox for the residents. We made it a little bit bigger, so we can actually get the loader bucket in it and not knock the thing over every time we put sand in it, so.
Okay, and that's for use by residents, so in their own private use, and it's not for.
Contractors or businesses.
Contractors or people who might have.
Correct.
Yeah, management, businesses, or anything like that.
And, and for the most part, it's been pretty good. Every once in a while, you have to put the run to somebody, but for the most part, it's, everybody's pretty respectful.
Okay.
Uh, we had a tree down on, a couple of trees down on Grove Street we took care of. Uh, we installed, I don't know, I think eight new street signs, because people like to put them in their bedrooms, apparently. I don't know. Like, why do you take a sawzall, cut a signpost off, and steal the sign?
What's the name?
Obviously, timber. Obviously, you need it in your bedroom for some reason. I didn't, I, why? You know?
See if anyone goes for Crossman Drive Extension.
Do believe these are challenges.
It could be.
Oh.
I'm, I'm sure Timber Lane's probably up at some deer camp somewhere.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
I have a deer sign on my back porch, but I bought it, just so people know.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the receipt.
Moving right along.
Moving along. Uh, sewer update. Ta 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 ta. Um, so everything's going rather smoothly down there, um, believe it or not. Um, they're, uh, late last week, they were pushing the pipe through, and they ran out of the, the centering brackets, so they kind of had to stop. So as soon as they, they get their order to come in this week, as soon as they get them, they'll get the rest of the pipe through. The manhole in front of Aspen Dental has been changed, and the pipe has been relayed from there to the new manhole at, by Taco Bell. So that whole piece, all that's left to do there by Aspen Dental is just pave that little stretch of parking lot. That piece is done. Um, it's working. We sent, I sent the guys down on Monday to flush that, because that's what we've been doing for months and months and months. And, uh, there was a little bit of solids in there, but they said once the, uh, sports clips gets rolling, they put enough water in there that keeps everything moving, and it's, it's all good. So it's a maintenance thing off our list, which is really great. Um, they started, they're starting this week putting in the manholes on the other side, on the east side of the street, and kind of tying that whole thing together, so the, the tedious part was obviously the drilling, and now getting the pipe in. Once they get that all in, uh, they just gotta connect, basically put the manholes in and start connecting the dots, and then run that little, uh, whatever, 130-foot stretch from the boring pit to the new manhole. And, uh, they've been testing all of the manholes, or the manholes and the pipes as they go. They're all passing so far, what they've got done. So we're moving along, and the pace should actually pick up now that they're done with the, the tough, tedious, deep stuff. So. That's that. And, uh, last time I was in here, I had mentioned that the city was looking to increase the sewer rate, or the hydrant flushing rates. Um, I got a, I made a call to the Commissioner of Public Works, and told them about our displeasure, and that we were considering doing it, taking care of our own maintenance. Um, I had a visitor yesterday, uh, from the Water Treatment Manager, and he said that the information that was put out there was incorrect, or is an error. So what we have been paying is $50 per hydrant per year. They wanted to raise it to $50 per hydrant billed twice a year, so it's basically $100 per hydrant a year. However you want to break it down.
So that instead of, what was it?
They were, we were paying $50 per hydrant one time a year.
But what, what did they say they were gonna charge us?
Originally, they said they were gonna charge us $200 twice a year.
Well, I thought 400 was.
Yeah, it was, it was a big increase.
Okay.
So they have walked that back to basically $100 a year. Um, so that'll have to be adjusted in the budget if that's what we want to do, or if we want to continue looking at doing it ourselves, which is, it gets kind of clunky. Um, just because it's kind of monkey in the middle kind of thing, but, um, it's something that we probably need to discuss.
Feasier to swallow $100 than it is.
Right.
For whatever, yeah.
So during my conversation with him, some other stuff came up. Um, there's some, there's, there's a disconnect between the city and the town, obviously, on some of this stuff. This hydrant stuff, like Bill doesn't necessarily know what the city's doing. The city doesn't tell us. We don't tell them. So Bill is trying to get this hydrant maintenance thing under control, so he's sending letters to people, or has sent letters to businesses, saying you need to do something to prove to us that you're maintaining your hydrants. So they hire a company to come in and flush their hydrants, run, test their hydrants, and the city's already doing them. So this company's paying the city to do it, and then they're paying a contractor to do it, because they don't know. So we have been invited by the city to sit down and have a conversation about how we can make this not so clunky, so we can talk amongst each other. Also, we just did that new water tap on Post Road across from Chesapeake Drive. They, the city did it for us, but there's like no, like they got a permit from us. The homeowners got a permit from us to do the connection, then we made, I made the calls to the distribution department, but the city didn't actually have a permit, so it gets, you start to get all these disconnects, and everybody's trying to figure, and then, so then the city doesn't know who to bill, because they don't have a permit. So they bill us instead of the customer. So we would like to sit down with them and try to figure some of this stuff out, if that is.
Sure. I mean, I don't think that rises to the Select Board level at this point.
Okay.
It's department to department, right?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, if, if you want to meet, if you want Kurt and I there to, like, committee meeting to do it, that's fine. I believe that, or I thought when this started with the city maintaining the hydrants, they were doing the ones that were in the town right away, only. That's how it started. So technically, those are ours in the right way. The ones that are outside, right, like Green Mountain Plaza.
Right.
Green, uh, Green Mountain Power, they're responsible for them. Am I fairly close on that bill or not?
City does, does our municipally owned hydrants, as well as some that are, definitely as private. I only knew they were doing three. Turns out they're doing more.
Okay.
So I, Tom Girfano called me yesterday after talking with Dave, and he and I had a very, very good conversation for a while. And so Dave and I talked today, and we're like, yeah, we should sit down and figure out what's, what we all are, because we are, we are all working toward the same thing in a totally different way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys are driving on two different roads to get to the same town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of see that as admin, but if you guys want to be involved, that's fine. I don't think it needs to.
It's up to you.
Yeah. If you hit a snag, then bring it back to the board.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Bill, of course, you should be in on that, since you're the letter writer that, yeah, okay.
Yep. Well, we'll, we'll get together, and we'll, we'll make that happen.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, you know, again, it's basically procedural, is, you know, how do we, how do we get a permit for a connection, and they get looped in, because they're the ones ultimately doing the work? And it, so, yeah, that'd be great.
You know, the other thing, if you come up with a number and a location for the hydrants, they're doing, that's a.
Part of, part of their.
That's a big plus.
Part of their, as they're trying to sort all this stuff out. Um, Bill has the locations, or it was 37, I believe it is, municipal.
Municipal, yeah. So we, the, the, the database that I have, I have a GPS location and an E91 address for every hydrant in town. Every, every single one of them. So I have them all broken down by municipal or private or whatever, but, uh, the city's also gonna be starting to put tags. They're gonna be tagging each hydrant with its own individual number. We will have a series of numbers start, so either, he says either like 900 or 1,000 will be the town numbers, and only our numbers. So in, in the event of like these new hydrants that have to get pumped out in the wintertime if they get used, we can call and say it's hydrant number 1,049, and they'll be like, duh, like, so.
So you have a location, a number, and a.
Every hydrant in town has a locatable address assigned to it right now.
So when I was in my former life, we had a. So when I was in my former life, we had a GIS map. And it showed all of the hydrants in the city and it showed all the hydrants in the town. The hydrants in the city had all of the information, the, the nozzles, the the flow, the, all that stuff. The hydrants in the town didn't have numbers, they were just a spot on a GIS map. So you could, you know, see, well, there's one on the corner of Ranberry Road, but you didn't have any information on it. This way we'll be able, these will be, they'll be numbered. You know, be able to get all that information with like, he said, GPS coordinates.
Really be good if both communities have the same summers.
Well, that would be really nice too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when we have our budget meeting, we'll be talking about such a thing.
Okay, because you know, one of the things that I found out in this conversation with Dave is the old style hydrants that have been in existence forever, that drain on site, you know, are no longer allowed on that municipal system, so. I don't know, are they going through and just changing them or are they changing them as they run into problems?
As they run into problems.
Okay, and do we need to do the same?
Well, yeah, there's, there's Levalle's. Yeah, Levalle's and Seward Road, I think are the two that don't, those are the two that don't drain.
Yeah, that one, the, the one that uh Windcrest rode in the dip, remember? That one didn't, never drained.
Sitting in the swamp.
Yeah, that was never gonna drain if you put a vacuum pump in it.
Yeah, that, that one, never, every time we used it, they'd have to go down and pump it out because it, it froze the next time, so.
And we, we took those apart a couple of times when I was there and tried to plug them and it just doesn't work. But half of them work, half of them don't, sometimes they drain slow.
Don't drain and, cause they don't want groundwater getting into the potable water. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Down there it will.
Yeah, but if you know how that drains and those hydrants work, the groundwater can never get into the potable water anyway, but that's a different discussion.
It's theory.
Yeah.
Theory.
Alright, so anything else for our road commissioner? Glad to see the salts in.
Ready.
Good.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, where's, where's the Kenworth? Is it?
Earlson.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, I dropped off your toolbox the other day.
Yeah, no.
And I was, we're short a truck here.
We're gonna change the registration to just.
Have Jim register?
Yeah, it's just easier.
Yeah, we'll rent it off him.
Yeah.
Well, if he gets rid of it, tell him not to park it by the side of the road.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Ed. Yep.
You too. Uh, is John Paul on?
You missed your fire, your police chief.
Did I, I, yeah, Ed Dumas, come on. Anybody wanna, you know, take over, share this thing, you know?
I did not have much tonight really to speak of. I have been checking on the uh, Denver Mall. Uh, every couple of days and there's no fence yet. Anxiously, anxiously waiting, cause looks like there's some gopher holes in the back of the mall where people are going in and out.
Yeah, there's no activity. Around construction crews.
No, yeah. No construction.
I don't think they're gonna mobilize that fast. Because they were on jobs somewhere else and then, and then you get the permit and it's not like we're gonna drop where we are because that customer is gonna be very irate.
Yeah, they, they got a bridge in Pittsburgh they have to get done like very, very soon.
So, yeah, I don't do, we don't know what they're putting up for a fence, do we?
It's, yeah, it's probably the temporary six foot chain link.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, unless they yeah, I won't go there.
Okay.
Unless they put razor wire on it, people will still be in there, but. Well, I was thinking insulators and electricity.
Do you have a sense for when you wanna do a police budget meeting?
It's out this week, uh, he'll be back next week.
Okay, what's your, what's your schedule?
Talk about it later.
All right, yeah, we just put a finance committee.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anything further for our town police chief?
You have a good story to brag about, you wanna talk about that?
What's that?
Door drive.
Can't say. Yeah, we, we did uh Yeah, we did have, oh yeah, two, couple things. We got the new tasers, we're solid certified on them now.
Okay, good.
I had the, have the hosters for them for everybody, even left handed people. Uh, it's quite a tool, I'll say that. Uh, the, what do you call them? The, the thing you put on your head, VR or whatever is video.
Oh.
Virtual reality is a hoop. To watch it, I spent more than, more than time chuckling, watched the guy flop around the ground than better than real life, I think, anyways.
I was gonna say, you don't actually taze it right now? That's a bummer.
And then uh, we also got the two left handed hosters for the new new weapons, so probably, I suspect before this month is over, we'll all be.
Probably taking you all summer, huh?
I, yeah, taken a long time, I know.
Yeah.
But yeah, we should be all up to speed then on that.
So you, did, did you respond to both doors? I saw that Rooster did his.
Rooster, so during training, uh, Officer Plack has left.
I should have mentioned his officer first.
Twice, I believe. One time to go down there and he hit on six vehicles. That they had to do search warrants on. I'm not sure what the outcome was on them, but then they stopped the car somewhere else and uh Rooster was able to hit on that car and they got half a kilo of crack and a bunch of fentanyl and a bunch of cash, so.
So he sniffed that too?
What's that?
Can you smell the cash?
I think, I think what the cash is mixed with, what's not, they go, we don't train the dogs to sniff cash. On the byproducts there of, of which it was used to purchase something, yeah. He's a, he is a well-used tool by the law enforcement community. And in greater role and accounted.
And if any of the other surrounding towns wanna send, you know, like food, Christmas gifts.
We take it.
We take it, yeah, as, as their thank you.
Yes, he is uh definitely a, a really good tool. Uh, Jimmy's a really good handler.
Yes.
And takes a lot of, lot of pride, really hands-on. I mean, we always see the, the brains run down the leash and Rooster's a good dog, so.
Well, thank Officer Plackus for us, please, yeah.
Um, this, weren't you still waiting on a holster for the guns also? Is that resolved?
They came.
Yeah.
Uh, day before yesterday, over at Town Hall, that box yours opened up and those were the two hosts that were waiting.
The left-handed one.
Cause I thought you were talking, before I thought you were talking about tasers, so.
I was.
Alright, so they're both all set and ready right away.
Almost the only one.
That's what happens when you're trying to do multiple tasks at once. Your home life, your work life. Town life.
Right about that though.
So.
Okay, is there anything else for Chief of Police?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Barbara Noise Pulling. Hey Barbara.
Yeah, hi, good evening.
Um, so I, I set you up, um. We did meet with Green Mountain Power, so why don't you fill in the select board because it's going to be a budget thing coming up. In a good way, I think.
Right, right, and, and yeah, and uh, please add in what, what I miss. Um, they are, they have certain things that they put in their relicensing to FERC. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, um, that they are required to do. Uh, because they said that the area that they gave the town is going to be a recreational area. And so FERC said if, if that's the case, then here are some conditions um, for your licensing. And um, these, there's a couple of ones that are coming due in December, this December. Um, so GMP got a late start on that, um, letting us know about that. But these are things they're responsible for and one is a kiosk. And which they will pay for. And the other part of that is um, coming up with the content for, for the kiosk. And they're required by their license to um, work with um, all of the tribes in Vermont. Not just the ones that, you know, most likely resided in this area or came to and from this area. So um, that is, that is something that we'll be working with GMP on. The kiosks, they'll pay for and they'll put up once we get the content. Um, and there was some, there's going to be a recreation monitoring program after the installation of the whole park, was that Mary, or just?
I think just the first phase, I think, I mean, but we would that, yeah, fair enough. We, I haven't seen their minutes yet, but they did have minutes coming to us summarized.
Right, and yeah, and back to the December deadline, uh, they're thinking they're gonna have to get an extension for that.
Right.
Um. They are, they, they have a safety sign that was mistakenly put up on the property. Which they said they will remove, it's like, you know, a high water kinda where.
Yeah, I, here's, here's the thing, I mean, they um, do have to do new, new FERC requirements, say they do have to put up signage, they have beefed up their signage all over and all of their, all across wherever they have, you know power plants. Um, and one of the things they have to get the landowner's permission, and since we're the landowners, if we want that signed down, we can say, take it down. Um, I was ready to take it down, cause I didn't know who put it up, and then they, they sheepishly kinda said, yeah, that was us. We just went around. I said, well, I think you put it in land that didn't, never even belonged to you. Cause they put it on the fifty foot right of, right of way piece. Anyway, so I wanted to run it by the select board. Um, my inclination right now is just to leave the signs, knowing that once we get the first phase, which is the overlook on the old road right of way in, we're gonna be moving that sign anyway. But what's your thought? Do we have them take the signs down now because they're on our land? Or just say, leave it for the time being and when we do the kiosk and start working there, we're gonna ask you to move it.
Really hurt anything, I mean, it does make people aware that there is a potential there for that water.
Yeah.
Doesn't harm anything, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's up probably right where the water wouldn't get to, but who knows, you know, so.
That would help.
Yeah, really, yeah, we have big problems.
They're not gonna even sign to know.
Yeah. If you can read the sign, you're okay.
You're gonna be swimming over there.
Okay, so we'll, we'll tell them that it, they can leave the sign for the time being, but we're, you know, as we progress with what we're doing. Um, we'll be in touch with them and they'll have to relocate the sign, so.
Is it in the way of something?
Um, well, it's right pretty much where we would be putting the, the walkway over to the overlook, the following the old road. Um, and the overlook will stop, of course, where the, the bridge used to be, so there'll be a fence there. Um, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then, so, so that's their, their part of this, not just that sign. But the kiosk and, and working on the content and then doing that recreational monitoring program, which may include some surveys with the town. Um, for our part, we talked to them about getting started on the walkway from the parking area in Simons to the overlook and make that ADA com- uh compliant. Um, some safety barriers, additional parking, picnic tables. And uh, clearing, um, general clearing, but particularly invasive plant clearing in the area. And Mary, you indicated that um, we might do some of that work in this budget year?
Yes, I think so. I spoke last night, in fact, with a person who um, does some landscaping work and she can identify, she's willing to come in and mark. Um, we'd have to pay her, but I don't have a number for you, I'll get that. Mark the invasives, so when we, and probably more in the spring, I don't know if we'd have a chance to do it this fall. And then have some volunteers, and we've got a number of folks who will volunteer, go in and clear some of the invasives out of there, so we start opening up the place and getting out the bad stuff. Um, target, by the way, uh, to do the kiosk and maybe maybe having at least partially cleared there uh, would be Memorial Weekend. We thought it would be nice, it would tie in with the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of whatever we wish to commemorate. Um.
Seventeen seventy-seven is the year you're looking for.
Well, I mean, we could, no, we were talking next, this coming Memorial Day, so it would be the US, um two hundred and fiftieth. Um, so that's kind of a target we gave them and then they'll be able to go to FERC and say, we, we couldn't get it done by December, but here are some of the other things that are gonna happen and we're looking at Memorial Day weekend. So a lot of it within this budget year, but I don't think it's going to be um, you know, a lot of expensive stuff, cause we're gonna rely on someone to mark and then volunteers coming in. So that's what I wanted you to hear, Mike. That's kind of where we are. We will be turning to some of the departments. Um, most likely highway and rec to help with um, getting that walkway over and getting maybe the, and hopefully the architect, I'm gonna find out, not an architect, but the landscaper. I wanna find out from her how much she, expertise she has in designing barriers like at the end and designing walkways ADA compliant, or is she just the plant person? So I'll try and find that out, but that's.
And I, and I don't know, cause I don't know on particular, but as far as the access, is that more of a gravel or a paved? Has that been determined?
It has not. Now, we don't remembering that we didn't get the grant we were going after that would have required us to use certain kinds of material. So when I say ADA compliant, we don't have to. We probably want to come close. Um, so we can keep that in mind, cause we're not using grant money to do any of this, it'll be town money.
But if we ever wanted to turn it over then from, let's say we went to a gravel, we wanted to turn it over, or pave, we would close it to the original.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you can get ADA compliance with gravel.
I'd be able to.
A half inch minus, packed it.
Okay.
You gotta keep certain slopes and whatnot, but.
Yeah, certain slopes, yeah.
On my end, I'll start gearing up in April. Once the snow kinda goes and getting it planned so that
Okay.
First part of May, start. I don't think it's this extensive project, am I correct?
It should not be. Are we waiting until Dave left? Oh, he's on, oops.
But I, you know, if it is, are we talking a week long, probably, I mean, that's
No, no, no.
So we can, we can plan accordingly and kind of ramp up in the first part of April.
Okay.
And be like, okay, we're gonna do it and, you know, get everybody's calendar clean.
Yeah.
Swallow them out some rocks up.
These couple of days is gonna take us this
Hit with my heart rate.
You're good with that.
I think that sounds good.
More advanced.
Yeah, there's a something.
There's a something.
Okay.
Got a bunch of that.
Good.
Place you.
Okay.
Bunch of.
Here's the plan. Dave, Dave, did you hear that? We just volunteered the highway department to help.
We did a while ago and he said yes.
Yeah, he, he was agreeable and we were doing the grant application.
Right.
One of the things that we might look at for materials, the town has that pile of asphalt, ground asphalt from Millings. And come up with, I mean, once you put that down and get it graded and it warms and cools once, it's gonna stay there and that, and that's a be really
You roll it, it'll help it even more.
Right, you roll it, hit it with calcium chloride and water.
Yeah.
Alright.
So we do have some material.
Good.
How far is that stretch, Mar, like feet wise from the road to ballpark fifteen hundred? Barb, how far is it?
Barb might know.
Oh.
I don't have the map with me, yeah.
I don't have it, you know, I would say probably closer to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
And fifty.
Probably a hundred, yeah.
Probably a hundred, yeah.
Trying to visualize it all.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the, the town planning commission would love to be part of the content creation.
Yes.
They are, they already kinda signed up for that with that grant application too, and they're kinda excited about this. Um, and, and GMP offered a couple of security suggestions for us. You know, for keeping the park safe. Um, one is a game camera. They say those are pretty effective, as long as someone goes and moni- you know, looks downloads the video and looks at it. Um, and they also said that the uh, plant manager across the river does spot checks from time to time, and that would continue, right, Mary?
Yes, he's doing it already and he, you know, they'll, it'll continue. And the whole rec thing, the rec survey thing, I mean, I think they can pick up some of the information, both from those checks and from, you know, the game camera. Um, so I don't think it's a huge, you gotta do questionnaires all over town or anything like that.
Close enough to the fire station?
Out of curiosity. Out of curiosity. Do they have cameras on some stuff at their park?
On the other side? I'm sure they, well, I, I'd say I'm sure they do, but I don't know for a fact.
I guess my question would be. Security wise. Camera that looked right over.
Yeah.
If they already have stuff on their side.
Do they make solar?
Now, again, this is their obligation, so we don't have to do it.
Right, but we could suggest, hey, instead of a game camera, just.
Monitor and to check.
Another technological.
Okay, we can check with them.
As a, as a thought.
Anyway, the side conversation was, is it close enough to center station? To enter, you know, with the right equipment to use the wifi from center and actually put a camera. We need power, but I just, you know, I just was having the conversation, so it was bill about. Solar cameras that, you know, would have batteries, you know, that would sort rechargeable batteries or something, so. Might be some options that would be like. Um, real time camera.
Yeah, we were having the same conversation that you were having, but from a different.
But from the different angle.
You know, I, I, I mean, I suppose if push came to shove, you could. Get a service there. In, in that power, you know, you're gonna, I mean, if you had to.
If we had to.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always a good deterrents.
And we've got the, it's good deterrents, and Bill does the safety grants every once in a while, and that might be one that we could, you know.
We've done some unique ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where we are, so we're looking for some activity. Doing, working on the signage, and, and the, the kiosk is going to be moved, we, um. Uh, we can change out the signage. There's some parts that GMP says has to remain. And I think that's more about the, um, history of the Native Americans that have used it. Um, but then there's stuff we can do, and I said to GMP, we want your history in here too. Because this is a pretty unique site. It's early water power, it was an early, I mean, it was a pre-revolutionary war. Mill site in the fort, and so there's a lot of stuff that, huge amount of history there.
Well, yeah, Vermont marble.
Yes.
They, they had the generating site there, right?
Yeah. GMP bought that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, and then. When GMP took over their power. Supply, I guess. They got the equipment, but that, that was actually BM's, uh. Generating facility there.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully we'll have more than just the kiosk at some point to. To, to explain all that history, but, uh, but at least we get the kiosk and there's. Two sides, front and back, to a kiosk that we can add information to.
And we're getting it for free.
That's it.
Electric rates call.
I was gonna say, when it comes to this, anything to do, I don't see any word free in there anywhere.
Perhaps not. Low cost, we're doing it, we're doing it on a.
Affordable.
Tight budget. Okay, so anything else, Barbara?
Um, we will start working on the budget and, uh, we'll keep working on the bylaw and. Remember last time when I said the, the commission wanted to go for an MPG grant for the town plan? Um, since then, and be, and before I've had a chance to meet with them. The executive director of the regional planning commission says, you know, just flatly said, we will do your, your plan for you. So I, I think.
I'm assuming with our input.
Well, of course, um, yes, uh, but I think that would be a cheaper way to go, and I'll run that by the, the, the town planning commission.
Okay. Good, alright.
Because I'd like to get the bylaw, you know, done, all wrapped up, and, and then. Then shift our attention to the park and to the town plan, which are kinda related, but.
Yeah, there. Um, by the way, comment period ends tomorrow for the regional plan. Um, so if you, now we, early on, you'll remember, we put some comments in which were accepted, accepted and incorporated. Um, so. If you wanna take a look tonight and see what's the, what's in the regional plan. But I think a component I'm still waiting on, and that's the definitions of some of the areas which. Is not controlled by the regional commission, it will be controlled at the state level. That's kind of how I understood some of it, so. Take a look if you wish, but I didn't, I didn't do any write-up and I didn't comment any further, so. Okay.
Yeah, that's the first regional plan to go through the new process, the new act two fifty, new LRB. Land use regulatory board process, so, um, I think they're still waiting on some agency. Um, feedback, maybe on those definitions. Uh, and it's, yeah, it's, it's brand new to everyone.
It, it's kind of a, frankly, a backward way of doing it, but there you have it. We, we did put our comments in early on. Any questions for Barbara and the planning commission? Nope, okay, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. See you later.
Yes, indeed. Larry is not on. Okay. Um, Marcia?
No Marcia, but she has the, you have the thing in here.
Oh, yeah, I was kind of hoping she would be on. Um, yeah, the air, another errors and emissions form. And this one is. If, huh, this is, this is a big number, um, and there is attached to it. An explanation. Uh, this is a grievance that Velco put in, apparently. In September this year, just a month ago, Christie Wright of Property Evaluation Review. Um, had. An addendum for our listers. Um, concerning Velco, uh, valuation of the Velco property. Uh, for. For, an additional four million dollars for. Um, valuation, and then within a month and Velco's involvement, that was, that four million dollars apparently was in. Error, so. The Errors and Emissions Certificate would. Yeah.
So.
Reduce, I did too, but I'm not sure, yeah, okay.
I don't think we should take action without an explanation from the listers, but my ultimate interpretation was. I think this is related to what she, Marcia was telling us about last time, which is. Some value got shifted basically from real to personal or whichever way, and then. So it's not, that's not really a change, but a change in where, how it's listed, and then. But then the two point six eight million.
Yeah.
Is a reduction.
Well, but she shows on her worksheet a six point seven million dollar reduction. So.
Right, but, so.
Yeah, I think the explanation would be in order.
Not decipherable to the labors.
Yeah, I, I didn't get it either. Um, Mike, I'm, I'm hopeful that this is correct, but because this all happened within a month. It didn't affect anything we did with the tax rate or any reliance on the grand list, and I, I hope that's correct, and I just. Really wanna make sure we confirm that.
Case, this is more of a question degree, probably.
Yeah. So if you can hang on to that. And if Marcia could join us for the next select board meeting, and Bill, if you could put that on.
Yep.
Next, that would be great. Okay.
More trouble understanding the numbers.
I'm trying to remember what we signed, because we signed something a month ago.
No, but we signed, we signed two that transferred something from personal property to real or the opposite. And then there were two errors and emissions, because one had to deal with taking it off. And the other had to deal with putting it on, so we didn't lose any net value. We did in the category. Which meant the tax rate was different.
This is separate.
But this appears to be separate.
I think they're saying that now, after they did that. I don't, I don't get where the six million dollar deduction is.
Yeah, I don't either, so.
Cause I thought the deduction was different.
Well, the one that we saw.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not as confused.
No, we're all confused.
Being confused.
But we're at about the same level of confused, which is probably pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, so we'll ask Marcia to explain this. Um, Chris Clark, town fire chief. Thanks for coming in.
Not a lot, as usual.
We like that.
Kevin said Monday is good, four o'clock.
Okay.
You just wanna do that or the budget stuff too?
Um. Well, we can start with the budget stuff if you have a draft.
I can probably have it ready by then.
You know, bylaws do take a while, so. And you got two lawyers who are gonna be looking, three count.
Did, would I tell you?
Oh, no, no, sorry. Two, two lawyers counting Kevin, so.
Would I tell you the last time, fifty something years? It's a work in progress.
It always will be.
It always will be.
Ah, so we'll do that Monday, four o'clock.
Yep. Thank you.
Um. We did our hose testing last week at the mall. We only lost one length of inch and a half. So that's pretty good for having, yeah. We have a lot of hose, so that's very good for. This year, pump testing, uh, Eddie's supposed to call tomorrow, so I don't know a date for that yet. He'll tell me tomorrow. Our biggest, uh, issue was finding water. All the ponds are pretty dry right now, so. I think we found a place, so. Uh, I should have to get the owner's permission, but they already said yes once, so we should be good on that, so he'll call tomorrow. Uh, Wonderfeet, I don't know if anybody went down for the big trucker treat, but huge success, lots and lots of kids there. We gave out tons of candy. We're going to the school Friday. And we might be going to Home Depot Safety Day on Saturday.
And you're going up to the meadows, the gables?
Yeah, that's next Wednesday.
Okay. So is the police department going to these too, or don't they get invited?
I'm not sure. I think they go to the, they're going to school.
Home Depot.
Okay.
I don't, I don't even invite that either.
Maybe, uh. Officer Plakis would wanna go to the Home Depot, cause with the dog. It's the Saturday, all the state police usually come with a dog and give a. Give some kinda.
I don't think they have one here now, do they?
Well, I'm not saying this year, they've always come with a dog when they had one.
Yeah, they. They send somebody, they send somebody across the parking lot in the suit and send the dog after them.
Yeah.
Oh, I got a couple of them. Without the suit.
Okay.
Um, in your. Folders or whatever you guys call them. We did our yearly salaries. For the.
Oh, yes, we approve the payments, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Um. And last and. Our engine four is all fixed. Ed Eaton came and fixed the primer, so we're all good. So far. Until he comes and does pump testing. See what's wrong there. Hopefully nothing, but.
Did you ever figure out what was wrong, wrong with the pump boss on that up in Killington that night?
Um, I don't wanna say it, but. Operator error.
Confusion with modern technology.
Yes.
Cam four.
It's not as simple as it was fifty years ago.
It's not, it's not, everything's. Computerized now, it's.
Kind of pain in the butt now, yeah.
Put in gear, pull the primer, and water comes to it.
Yeah.
Turn this valve water leaves. No electronics, nothing.
That's the problem, everything's electronic these days.
Yeah, yeah. And we're working in a water environment now, somehow or other.
And you're working with trucks that don't get worked all the time, which sometimes for electrical issues is more of an issue than using them every day.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, that's all I had to.
Okay.
To tell you.
Alright, so we'll be meeting Monday, that's good.
Yep. Four o'clock. I'll, I'll do some budget work, but we'll start with the bylaw stuff.
Okay, yeah, good, thank you. Alright, um, any questions for our fire chief? Are we still under statewide?
Yep.
Fire, okay.
I, I, actually on Sunday. Almost been ten, eleven o'clock, I got a phone call that was, um, we were under our actual red flag warning on Sunday.
Oh.
It was warm, windy as heck, and, and. It was taken all summer for the ground to dry, the leaves to dry, and we're going in the time of year with a lot of leaves, so. I know there was a couple of people inquiring today looking for permits, because it rained yesterday, but it don't work that way. When, when they let us know. It might take another week or two. Last year, we were almost six weeks, almost two months last year.
Yeah, I had one guy call me and said, I had a puddle in my yard. Can I burn? I said, no. I think he probably did anyway, because he said, what are you gonna do to me?
Oh.
Well, actually, they can, I mean. We can get Ed's crew involved and they can be fine.
Yeah.
There, there is a fine process for burning without a permit, so.
And this is not the time to mess with that, I.
I mean, granted, I think today, even, you know, wet, but they're not gonna go in. Conflict with the, uh, with the state, that we started issuing permits when they tell us no.
Yeah.
Well, then they're gonna be coming back, though, you know, you burned down several hundred acres of woods here, so.
Yeah, this was even a few weeks ago, it wasn't yesterday after the rain.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where'd you get that puddle from?
I'm not sure.
Turn the hose on.
For the most part, people are pretty good.
Alright, uh, Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer. Hi, Carrie.
Good evening. Again, there's not a lot to report. There is, uh, a set of liquor licenses. Um, for you to, I guess, approve. If you're still doing that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think that was a question back to you, um, there. Your last note, or, or, and it was from the, the state people saying. They will assume that local permission has been given if they, you know, if. If they see the application, which I think is a backwards way of doing it, so I think we will keep approving. The liquor licenses, because we've got the chief to say whether it's a good or idea or not, and almost always we approve them, but I do remember there was one that we didn't. And that was in a touchy situation down at the Cortina, I think, and we wanted to be able to keep an eye on those things, so. Um, there are two, uh, one is actually, one's tobacco and. One is second class liquor license, and they appear both to be for. Um, Suliman Javed, and this is, where's the address?
Right next door to town hall.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Um, one fifty-one Business Route four west. The chief says fine on, on both liquor and tobacco, okay. Motion's been made to approve.
Dang it.
Um. Motion's been seconded. Is there any? Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries four zero. I still don't know who's supposed to sign, but I guess we could all do that.
The one we don't.
Okay. Got that one, Carrie, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I had tonight.
Um, I will say that the. Uh, finance committee met and Carrie had raised, and we've mentioned it to, to you folks, um. That we, that Carrie asked us to look into the possibility of hiring payroll services. Um, to come in and do our payroll instead of having that. Uh. Done internally in the treasurer's office, so we did have a meeting to hear from the representatives from ADP. And it was instructive, but my takeaway was. Well, two things, one, they were gonna run some numbers for us based on a month to month. Uh, average of people actually working for the town, because the payroll fluctuates a lot, especially in the summer with. Um, part, you know, the, the lifeguards and other part-time people here and there, and, and. So they were gonna try and do that, and I don't know if they've gotten back to you, Carrie, but I haven't seen anything further from them.
Week when you just paid the firemen. That once a year, when you.
Yes, exactly.
Thirty, some odd names to the list.
Right, that's a good example. Right. That's a good example of.
Yep.
Yeah. So, um, and the other thing was the amount of. Uh, burden that they would be lifting off Carrie is not a hundred percent. They would do, be taking part of the work from her, but she would still have to be doing other, others of it. And when we had Andrew in, um, to talk about the audit, you know, we. Were shamelessly, we always ask him questions about other things related. And we asked him if there were other municipalities that he was aware of who. Used payroll services. And he did give us. Uh, did he give us names or he was checking with? Yes, he did give us some names and there were municipalities. Um, up north. And then he said, most municipalities do do the payroll in-house, but he did give us a couple of names to follow up with of other payroll services. So. Um, we're, we're looking around and we were looking for. Um, payroll services that have experience working with municipalities. So. Um, the, the search is on, no conclusion yet, but that's a pretty quick summary of. What's your personnel and finance committee? Has been doing. And I don't think there's nothing to bring. Is there? I don't think there's not anything yet to bring to the full board for consideration. Uh, fair summary, Carrie?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Um, the new change in the, um. State statutes regarding individual budgets and the ability for the town. Because we have established a, um. Capital Improvement Fund, we wouldn't necessarily need to change anything or do anything.
We don't have to change anything.
Yeah, because it.
Cause we've had the voters tell us how to use excess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have to vote it in order to change it.
We would have to vote it. Right.
So.
Yeah.
Cause it, in, in the way I understood what Kevin had sent us in the letter was that. That money doesn't go back to the specific budgets. We could spend that in any fashion we wanted.
Yeah. And it was, it was more wide open than what we have this time.
Dave's, uh, money in the highway stays within highway.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So I think what we have has, you know, it's got the voter's authorization. It goes into one fund for capital improvements.
Like I said, anytime we don't borrow money to do a project, and now we're saving money. So that's.
We are. We are. Okay. Any other questions for Carrie? Okay. Thank you very much, Carrie.
You're welcome.
All right. Is Mike on Delahanty? No. Is, oh, Joe Donardo, he's here, Public Safety Building Clerk.
Yep. Um, nothing new to report. The last thing we've done is, um, authorized, uh, the PD to get that. They, I did, uh, that come in with the, um. That we needed that, um, keypad for the.
Oh, right.
I didn't, I don't know if there was a bill in there for it today, but we authorized that. So I didn't know if that was done yet.
Okay. Don't know.
That's all, that's where we are right now. Everything seems to be going smoothly. I check in with Ed and Chris from time to time, see if any problems and. Haven't heard a thing.
Everything's good. Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
That packet's all back.
Yeah.
Evening.
Good evening.
All right. So, uh, so I got the committee meetings to Warren talked about earlier. I'll take care of that. Uh, nothing left in the, on the agenda or in the packet. That's pretty good. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, the budget sheets.
Yes.
All the department heads have them. Uh, some have already gotten copies from me and other ones have had them, so they're already in progress. Um, our generators had their annual service done over the last couple of weeks. Um, and as a result, they sent us recommendations for two of them to have coolant service, which prompted a whole different conversation with them. Uh, because of the cost of it and some of the logistics. I'm getting updated. Pricing and, and there may be, we. We'll see what's in the, what's in the budget and if this is a necessity or recommendation, because the cost was not. Inexpensive, so.
Um, it's not included in the contract?
It's not, not. This is a, this is a coolant change. So it's been, um, he said four years or five years since we've done it. And he says after that time it starts to lose its properties of cooling and cohesion. And so we spent a while, I spent a while on the phone with them. I'm not done yet because there were some charges that shouldn't have been there. And there were some, just things that didn't make sense. So.
Okay.
So do we? Want to talk with the local. Mechanic shop because this is a diesel motor or propane motor. They can test that. I mean, do we want to ask Earl's? They do most of our fire truck work.
I have asked Earl's and some other local vendors who have all declined to work on our generators.
Really?
Yes.
Which, which generators is it?
Which?
The ones that they're, look at the.
That they want to replace?
Specifically, um, the school and the, the post or pump station.
Hmm.
Nobody wants to work on them. I find that interesting.
It's.
I, I got a coolant tester.
I mean. I don't know. And I think that, uh, you know. I think Dave could help us here, but I do believe we could send. You could have somebody come in and sample the coolant.
Yeah.
And make sure that it meets its freeze point and boil point.
So I, I, they, they're going to come back to me with. The two different quotes had the general, had. About a hundred and forty miles of different charges. So. Between the two, I'm like, they're a half mile apart. We shouldn't be getting charged a hundred and forty miles more than one to the other.
Yeah.
Uh, so there was a few discrepancies. Um. But based upon the. Service contract we have, I said, there should be, there's certain here that don't belong here. Like, yes, you're right. I'm like, great. So let's. We're, we're, we're going to take a step back and they're, they're going to come, they're going to, I'm waiting for them to come back to me.
Let's try again on this.
Yeah, that's basically what I said. So. I have very.
Not. Questioning their. Um, knowledge, but it depends if it's green, if it's a green glycol coolant, it does break down over time, but. At least that pump station. Generator is new enough. I would assume that's probably a, a pink.
I, so I, I have, I have our inspection reports and I have the, the, the recommendations of, I can, I can send them to you if you want to take a look at them and.
I'm just, you know, I. If it's an extended light pole, that's good for ten years at least.
Yeah. Um. I just don't routinely change the coolant in my tractor.
I was just gonna ask, all the coolant in your tractor. And they don't. It does, it does, the old green glycol does break down over time, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, four or five years is.
We're not, we're not committed to anything, but that's why I said, is this something like that we? Have to do that we should do. And they're like. We have found that the ones that aren't getting done, when they start running, if they run for extended period of time, they don't run as efficiently and they break down. And so. This is more of a preventive maintenance, which I understand, which is the whole point of these.
Right.
But, yeah. Um, the other issue we have had is with the one at the, um, fire station in Center Rowland.
Yeah.
Uh, we have had. Quite a bit of, um, yard waste debris and, and water that's been in the generator housing. And. The, the only difference with this one versus all the other ones is since it's propane, it's not sitting on top of a diesel tank. So it's sitting at ground level. So it's more susceptible to this. So. There's. It, it, that, that one has given us more trouble and more service work than any of them. Um, but. It may be. Advantageous to put it, to lift it, exactly. But the rest of them sit on top of the gap, so it keeps them off the ground. And this one sits right at ground level. So. Uh, it, it may be advantageous to. Put a riser underneath it or, or, or something to, but it's, and it's also a different model. It's a different, it's a different, um, manufacturer than the rest of them. Um, so. I think that was a generac.
To just putting a diesel generator in there.
I wonder.
Well, we don't have diesel tank. So, but we did, we did that, where we did that because the propane is right there next to us. That, that was, that was.
Right, but, but I'm looking at the new public safety building and there's. Two or three tanks buried there, but we went with a diesel generator.
We'll just run an extension cord from there to there.
Yeah.
We got a generator.
We got enough generator to run all, everything. Including the school.
Cause zip tie to the power lines going on.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Get up on some blocks.
That, that's, that's completely.
I, I've got a cooler generator in my house. And it's, it sits up on a pedestal that they supply and I have not had a leaf in that thing. Yeah. Ever. I mean, I've been here four years now.
Yeah, that's probably a poor installation.
It, it, it is, it's, it was, it was an issue with the way it was put in. So they made comments, but they, they have drained substantial amounts of water. Out of it, out of it. And they made some comments about like the yard waste that gets in there because when they have more launch blows in there. So.
Don't know how the water is getting in it.
I don't either, but it, it does.
That is really confusing.
We've had some, we've had some issues, so.
No sets against it probably.
It could be.
But you know, well, if there's water in it now and it hasn't rained all summer.
No, not lately. No, this, this was, this was earlier, but it was, because it was locked out. It wouldn't. It failed to start, so we had them come down. They said it was, it was a lot, a lot of water in there. So it shut itself down to prevent itself from running and.
This is a. Two-prong or two-point. If you raise that. The wiring is probably all going to be too short on one end. Uh, this is how this works.
Well, it's got, but the panel's on a riser. The panel's up.
So we might be, we might be okay to just raise a generator and, and do that. I mean, do we want to have somebody like JJ come and look at it? I mean, he's taking care of the public safety building. Um, he could make some recommendations or whatever. Um, because we do want him to look at. Some options at the new building, so. I think we should formally request his.
I think JJ's, uh, left-hand man's on the fire department.
Yeah.
I mean, just have him sneak a peek.
Somebody to, you know, I, I think the idea is it's got to be probably put up a couple of feet off the ground.
Yeah.
That, that would, that would eliminate some of the issues that we're, we're having.
If that occurs. And, and also I do believe that one does not have a block heater. It does now? Yeah.
Did we get, well. When, when they, they, they did put it in. However, there was never, there, there was supposed to be an outlet installed and we were, someone was going to do it and they never did. So the block heater is there.
There's just no power to it.
There's no power for it.
So you might just will not have one. There's that disconnect between.
Yes.
Big mountain power in the motor.
December first, you just run an extension cord across.
So we have a block heater.
So.
But there's no outlet in, in the, in the housing for it to run off of.
Okay. So how do we fix that?
I think we need to formally. Ask. I, I'd go with. JJ to do it, you know, because we, we have him, we need him to do some more work at the public safety building for that pump station. So. I don't know if we just send him a letter or call him. Do something, but get it done. We need to get it done before it cold weather, if they can fit it into his busy schedule.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't mind. I don't, I don't want to reach out, but I don't have, I don't have his contact information, so I don't, I don't want to go, but if you, okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Very helpful.
If you want to, you know, it's seen as a fire station. If you want to be in the middle of it, that's good. I don't want to put any more in the middle of it, but you know, tell them what we need. We need to get it raised up and, and a power to it for, uh. Um. A block heater. And if he can fit it in before winter, we really appreciate it. Cause I don't think we're going to get the other job done before winter. Unless they jump right out and do it like next week.
Oh, the conduit?
Yeah.
For that. Wow.
Yeah.
No.
It's been how long?
Yeah, so. But, um, if you meet with him, if you set up a time to meet with, let me know. Cause I'd like to talk to him. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and, uh. With the post road speed sign, we had repaired under warranty. When it came back, it did not, it would not program the way it was before. We had like words to have custom messages. So after, uh, several visits, after drove out there several times and hooked up to it and talked with the vendor, they realized when they reprogrammed it. They didn't enable it to have the words. So after some time sitting on the side of post road today, we got it enabled. So. Uh, it's back and programmed.
It was an enabler.
He was over there sitting on the hood of his car.
I, I was, I was, yep. Um, and we went back and forth and a lot of pictures and screenshots and, and so it is back the way it was. Uh, so it now, now gives people the messages to slot it.
Okay.
And you're now.